And Jonathan would like to begin the meeting with prayer and then if you will remain standing and join us in the place to the flag. I'm going to call on one of our employees, Kyle Adams, to open the meeting with prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Lord God, we thank for this day, Lord. We thank for the blessings that you give us. We thank for allowing us all to come here safely, Lord, and for the commissioners to be able to come here and handle the business of the county, Lord. We just pray that they do so in a godly manner in a way that's pleasing to you, Lord. They do ask these things in your name. Jesus, have a prayer.
Amen. Throw us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see you. Thank you so much for your interest in the county's business. We will begin with the items on the agenda being the scheduled public hearings. There are none. Public comment from citizens, none scheduled. But we do have some elected officials, other officials here with us. We'll recognize them and ask for their, if they want to share with the group at this time or come in a little later. Chuck, what do you?
I've got it.
Yeah, come ahead. Perfect.
Thank you, county commissioners. What we did yesterday is we finished up the abstract for 2024 in the revenue commissioner's office. This means that we know what we're going to charge each individual for their taxes for next year and their business personal property. That number came in at seventeen million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars and seventy cent. Last year, we collected fifteen million, four eighty-nine, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cent. That's a one point nine million dollar increase in revenue for the state, the county, and the school systems. I'd also like to say of that one point eight million, there was one big large industry here in Andalusia that came off a twenty-five-year abatement. And that was an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars for this year on taxes. So we were happy that that happened and we were glad this business is there. I'd also like, while I'm here, to thank all of the property owners and all the citizens of Covina County for this. And is there any questions?
Anybody have questions? Based on the comment you made about the abatement phasing out, it's probably what, a seven percent, on average, a seven percent increase in abolumen tax?
That's correct. Of the eight point five, oh, the abolumen, yeah. The one point eight million is around seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we got from the abatement coming off.
Okay, so the balance of that represents something like a seven, six or seven percent increase.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, sure, that's right.
All right. Any questions?
And we'll, we sent it to the state yesterday to the comptroller's office and Karen's got a copy of it, so y'all ought to be able to finish your budget up now.
All right, good. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Sheriff, do you have anything at this time or later? All right. Don't see the judge here. I called on Kyle Adams to pray. We had introduced him at a special call meeting, recognized you at this time. Kyle, do you have anything you want to share with us? Kyle is a new employee to the commission. We're glad to have him here as assistant inmate director and also as communications director. So move on to the consent agenda. Item seven. Commissioners, you have received by email the July twenty-third regular meeting minutes and also the special call meeting minutes of August the seventh. You also have received the accounts payable and payroll list for July. Ask if there are any changes or corrections to note on any of those or do you have questions about any of those items? Or if there are none, a motion to approve all the items under consent agenda would be in order.
I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Those items are approved. Under old business, we rolled forward to consider adoption of an updated per diem policy for county officials and employees. We're not quite through with the review and considering input on that at this time, so if there's no opposition, we will act on that. We'll just roll that into the next meeting. Gives us two more weeks to try to tie up loose ends on that. All right, it will be on the under old business on the next agenda. Move on to new business. Page thirty-one in your packet is a listing of board members for the Florilla Airport Authority Board. Those are six-year terms that expired in September, so we're getting close. These are the three county commission appointees. Take it Ricky Suggs, Wayne Eason, and Whitney Simpson. And between now and the next meeting, I encourage you all to talk to them, unless in your area land, if you want to confirm with them their interest in being reconsidered or see if there are others that are interested and we can take action at the next meeting.
Okay, I've spoken with Whitney Simpson, but that's the only one.
Okay. Others of you certainly can reach out to them as well if you know them and see what their wishes are. All right, so that will be on an upcoming meeting for consideration, upcoming agenda. Next is consider award of inmate communication bid. Page thirty-two in your packet is the information. I'm going to ask Karen to give us a report on that because we had pushed that out to the attorney for review along with the sheriff.
The attorney has reviewed all of the proposals that we received, and she has determined that CPC appears to be the successful bidder for the inmate communication services. And Sheriff, I believe that you concurred that that was, that all the equipment was satisfactory to your needs at the jail.
All right, so you, with the concurrence of the sheriff and the attorney, as CPC being the low bidder, what are your wishes, Commissioner?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
All right. Motion to award the bid to CPC.
Second.
And second. Anybody have questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that is approved. Next item is consider local consent agreement with the state of Alabama related to the cybersecurity plan. There are funds available through a grant program that will be flowing out in coming months. We're being asked, requested to just sign the consent agreement, which would get us on the list to be eligible for funding. That's all at this point. But then as the particular programs come out requiring a twenty percent match from the locals, I believe, then on a case-by-case basis, we would be able to review that funding and the program and see if we're willing to commit at that time on the grants that are available to us. Again, it's just a document, this one is just an administrative act, so is it, can I get a motion to agree to the local consent agreement or approve the local consent agreement with the state of Alabama?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Anybody? Second.
Second.
Second motion, second. Anybody have a question on that?
Is this total amount, this on here, this is the total amounts that would be available for?
Total for statewide.
State.
And then we'll have our shot at those various programs as they develop those, I guess.
We can buy that by seat to select. We might get a lose.
We have to apply for each.
I think on a case-by-case basis is what it sounds like, or they may just make you aware of what they are and then make an offer of it and you can.
But it's not like having to write a grant out to get it.
All right, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved. Next, on page thirty-four, you will find a contract with the Alabama Department of Youth Services. And Karen, have I given us an overview of this agreement?
Okay, this is an annual agreement that we put into place so that Youth Services has an outlet for children that they need to send for behavioral issues. And they have identified Southeast Alabama Diversion Center in Dopeville as the place that the bed would be reserved in that area for our county.
So they actually retain one bed for us through this where if we need to send a child over?
Right. We get the one place and then, of course, there's obviously more, but this.
Right, but this guarantees us at least one at any given moment.
I've heard some, I don't know, it was in Houston County, something where they was concerned about the cost going up on this, have they?
We had high rates. About two years ago, it went skyrocket high, and then it came back down to more manageable, more like what we'd seen in the past years. But they are looking at new legislation in this next coming session, I believe, to address some of those issues.
Okay, I just wondered if we knew any.
It's definitely a topic.
It was pretty substantial.
When is our break right now?
Is it thirty-four?
I glanced and then.
It seems like it was like thirty-four dollars a day a bed or some, wish I had thought to look that up, but I didn't. But it's somewhere around thirty-four.
So if I understand it right, the Department of Youth Services is the one that pays for this designated bid. We're not actually having to send a monthly payment for that, is that correct?
We pay for the, they give us the one bed at no charge and then every additional.
And after that, we pay.
We pay. And usually there's less, sometimes, you know, three, maybe six, according to what else is going on, but you'll have different amounts.
Well, I mean, we still want to do it, I know.
Oh, yeah. Isn't it?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion and second. Anybody else have questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, the motion carries. Next is consider approval for a retail beer license application. It's off-premises only, Dollar General Stores of Alabama.
Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, was that in there? Okay. So page thirty-five, six, thirty-six, and thirty-seven is the application. So it's Family Dollar located where, Tom?
Strong river intersection.
Strong river, twenty-nine. All right.
In heat.
That is a new store?
Yes, sir.
What are your wishes, Michael, that's in your district? You want to lead out?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. We approve it, you know, right down the road, they already have a store with alcohol right down the road, so within a quarter of a mile of it.
Okay.
I don't know if it was noted, but it was the retail beer off-premise only and retail table wine off-premise only was the type license.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody else have questions, thoughts, concerns on that?
We had, one time we, the store right across from us, we had some kickback on that, but since then, it did open and, I mean, they did do it, so this is a little bit further up the road, so I don't see the community saying too much about it, maybe.
All right. We have a motion, second. If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries and we will submit that back to ABC Board. Next is consider donation of an Art Forrester painting. Ms. Lynn, I think that you're familiar with this and we'll let you lead the discussion on that, so we know what we're talking about.
The painting was the one that hung in the probate office for so many years. It was painted by, was it in here?
It's on the screen.
It was painted by Art Forresters, my understanding, and.
Kyle, can you turn it just a little bit, since we're not seeing?
Anyway, it has been stored for, I guess, a few years in one of the bathrooms at the courthouse because they, apparently it wouldn't fit in with what they had at the probate office anymore. It was painted for Leland and Zerwin, he was the probate judge. So I asked in Florilla if they would be interested in it, since the Forrester man was from Florilla. And of course, they were, they're building a museum down there and just absolutely would love to have it. So to retrace my steps, then I went to, well, I spoke with Stacy Brooks, and then I also spoke with Kathy Enser, that's Lee's wife. And so as far as we can tell, it's free to go and the commission gives approval. So it will be placed in the Florilla museum.
And I spoke to Lee Enser also, and he has no problem with it.
Do you remember how large that is? Isn't it a large?
It's large.
Bigger than a crane.
It's not quite that big. It's about.
It's close.
Six by ten.
Okay.
It's not quite as tall as I had planned it looks, it's about six foot tall.
It's in the.
It's going to be six by eight or ten.
Very large.
It's large.
Yeah, it's huge. You want it?
I want to donate it to Florilla.
I do, too.
I think it'd be great.
I do, too. I'm just so happy they wanted it.
Keep it, you know, keep it in.
I'll make sure it gets delivered safely.
Okay.
I mean, it needs to be put in a place that's climate-controlled, because it would deteriorate. Like I said, it's an old painting, it's very nice.
It's in very good condition.
It is.
It's always been kept under control, but it's in very good condition.
Mr. Art Forrester is quite a character, quite a character. He's interesting. Been gone for a number of years, but he's kind of bigger than life.
I'll make us a motion, we donate it.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any other comments, questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
They intend to put wax, be my poems in there, too.
Well, that's going to be nice. We'll donate to that, too. Next item is, Sheriff, I'm going to ask you to come up. This is to get an update on canines and also out-of-state travel retroactively, so.
Discussion on the canine update. At one point, we had four canines. We had two at the jail and two on the road. One of those canines has been adopted. It was a canine that we didn't have an actual cost in. It's been adopted by one of the corrections officers with stipulations that it's not to be used for anything other than a pit. The other canine that was at the jail is currently being housed off-site and in training for another officer to take on the road, and the other two canines are on the road. So that's what we've done with our canines, are no longer, no longer at the jail. However, we do have these canines, we still can use them to look into the jail as far as.
I think we've been asked about decertifying, is that the term, one that we had never certified? Decommissioning, so, but we had not done that, so we just want to get on record. If you'll communicate with Karen exactly which one.
Sure, sure. One of, the one that, the one that we retired, so to speak.
Tyson?
Tyson, Tyson, the yellow Staffordshire.
We just want to make sure that he's off.
He needs to be off the insurance. Ingrid is still, she's not so much in training, but the officer is. He's one of our younger officers, Kevin Barger, and he'll be taking, he would be taking her own and the other two are assigned hammers.
All right.
What happened to Cujo, does he live?
Cujo, what happened at the end of that movie, didn't Cujo get, get gone?
Big old saint.
Yeah, yeah, big old dog. Big old dog.
Did we make a motion on that or just?
I really just wanted.
Wasn't Cujo one of the four, or out publicly?
I never had a Cujo. I would never name a dog Cujo.
Cujo wanted to.
He's actually on the road. His name, Bruno.
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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Bruno's on the road.
Thank you so much for getting him out of jail.
No problem.
I've worked on that now most of the year.
Blake, can we ask that any canine from their own be handled by a certified deputy?
Yes, that's no problem. I get it.
Thank you.
No problem.
And also follow the protocol that the insurance company set forth, that they had to be in a, an insured home, wasn't that right?
It would have to, yes.
For our insurance to cover them, they had to be in a home that had homeowner's insurance and specified that the dog was part of it.
Okay. That's reasonable. That's fine.
All right. Next item is consider retroactive approval for out-of-state travel. Are you familiar with that, that item?
Yes, this is where I went to Flint, Michigan. The air travel and lodging was all taken care of by the National Sheriff's Association. It was a last-minute trip. I went to Flint, Michigan to tour the Genesee County Jail to look at their Ignite Program, which is a program set for to educate inmates and reduces recidivism by up to twenty-five percent.
Okay. And just a reminder to all of you that we make public any out-of-state travel by employees or elected officials. In this case, as he said, it was paid by.
The National Sheriff's Association.
All fees, per diem, and such, are you requesting?
I don't know about per diem and everything. I still pay for my meals, but they pay.
Okay, so you're requesting per diem and then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You said Flint, Michigan?
Flint, Michigan.
Did you drink the water?
No, but they said it was, that it was the best water in the country now.
Now.
Now, but I didn't, I had no cause to drink the water. They don't even have sweet tea up there, so the thing I had was carbonated.
There's also, okay.
Well, we have requests for travel approval for Joseph Cato and Aaron Rodriguez for conferences.
The China PCI Conference in Texas that they're currently at?
Yes, yes, they are at a conference in Texas right now. That has been paid for as well. All they require is per diem.
And then, of course, the vehicles that they traveled on to get to the airport.
Get to the airport.
So we have the three, three officers, including the sheriff, that have made trips and we're making those public.
Yes.
And we just need approval retroactively for that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve those. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved. All right. What else did you have on your?
Surplus of a couple of vehicles.
All right.
Currently, we do have some surplus vehicles that are on the line, ready to go. They've already been surplus, but we need to make an addition. We have a two thousand eighteen Tahoe that's sitting in the back of the parking lot with a grenade motor. Motor's no good in it, would not be cost-effective to fix it. Also, we have a Ford long-wheel-based van that was actually donated to the sheriff's office or commission, however, it was donated, and we no longer need that. And I'd like to surplus that one. We have an enclosed trailer over here that was awarded to us through the Ten Thirty-Three Program from a DECA. It has fell off our books as far as us having to be accountable for it, so it's no longer an accountable item. It is falling apart and I would like to put it up on GovDeals as well to get rid of it.
So you heard the three items. Is there a motion to declare these items surplus so they can be sold? Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second, questions?
Comment. I'll have all these pictures and VIN numbers and descriptions and everything sitting on Mr. Kip's office before the end of the week, so hopefully today.
Tags off of them.
Tags off of them. We still have to dismantle one of them, so we got to pull it over here to the jail, so it won't run.
Okay. And that van, is it usable for any other?
It's a, it's a V-ten van. It's like a three-quarter ton van. The, our team, the IRT actually used the van, but since we have the Bearcat, it's no longer needed. It has benches on the, each side of it. I do not think the air conditioner works in it, but it's just a big old white van with windows.
I didn't know if there was any department that.
If there was anybody that needed it, I'd certainly have no problem letting them have it.
If it was.
The road department could use it.
Kind of dependable to run through town.
Right, if it's, if the road department would need it for anything, they could certainly, certainly have it.
You know, they would use for it.
They could use it.
Can use it? It's yours.
So let's back up on that one and say we need to transfer that from the sheriff's department to the road department. So the motion is to declare two surpluses, transfer the van to the road department.
That'll be fine.
We had a second on that?
Yes. And it's got good tires on it and everything. It's not the prettiest van in the world, but a good cleaning with some comet and elbow gracing should be looking good.
Hope you don't crash it outside, too bad with a.
Please pressure wash it properly.
Yeah.
All right, well, you've heard the motion and second and the discussion. If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right.
That's all I have.
Nothing else to share?
Sheriff, I want to ask you about, we talked about it, but I couldn't remember enough to tell the rest. The assistant jail administrator's truck, you told me it had a problem. What was wrong with it? The one that we had that's not now?
I don't know if it has a problem.
Okay.
I don't. It's, I think it's fine.
Okay, so it's usable?
It's usable.
So right now, one of our jail administrators could drive that if she needed to?
If she needed to, she could.
But it's available for use?
It's available. It's available for use. We use it for, it's actually a kind of a check-on work release and things like that. Make, move stuff around. It's good to have a truck.
Oh, yeah. Sure. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Sheriff. Call Lynn Rawls up, I think, to handle the next couple of items. These are, I think there's a request to solicit bids on heavy equipment parts and also some annual bids. What do you have, Lynn?
We just have our heavy equipment parts and we just generally get a discount. We'd send this out to local vendors, they just generally just give a percentage of discount and we just kind of renew that contract. We do generally buy more than thirty grand a year in those type parts, so.
So the bid is different. It's a request for a discount amount, not a dollar amount.
Right.
Okay.
And then also, since the bid law's changed up to thirty thousand instead of fifteen, a lot of our bids that we had in the past, since, you know, they've kind of dropped off because a lot of stuff we buy is never over thirty grand, but we do still have like liquid asphalt. But if we can go ahead and, I know that's one item, the heavy parts, we can go and, if y'all could give me approval for that one, then we can go on to the next one as well, unless you want to group them all together as one approval.
Can we get a motion to approve soliciting bids on the heavy equipment parts? You send, do you send that to all the local vendors in the county?
Motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved. Lynn?
And I may have missed a few, but I know liquid asphalt's coming up and I think seeding fertilizer's coming up. Those are two that we bid out as well, and there may be a few others, but I'd just like to get permission to go in and advertise for those annual bids.
Put liquid asphalt in.
Seeding fertilizer, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second on annual bid items, the two you named.
Tank cars could be another one. I mean, there could be others, but I think that's the main one.
Any opposition to adding others to that if he's made aware of them over the next week or two? All right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right, that's approved.
That's pretty much it on that end.
Any updates you wanna share?
Uh, they got the, the contractor got the signs up on fifty-five yesterday, so our crews are putting up steel fence right now on the one oh seven job. And, uh, we're doing our demo work on the, um, concrete flume out there and then we'll put in the pipe. Pipe's already been delivered and we'll probably get that pipe put in tomorrow, then we'll start building the road, cut, cut our entrance center road. And once we get that done, then we'll turn it over to the contractor and then they'll finish the job.
Good deal.
So it should go, go pretty quick.
Are they gonna, you said they're gonna tie both ends at the same time?
Yeah, they'll pave, once they get everything ready, they'll, they'll pave it and tie everything together. So that's, that's coming, coming pretty, pretty soon. Um, our Glen Chambers project is complete. Our Pageant Road hopefully be complete on the surface treatments today on that. On Pageant Road, the widening and leveling has been done on that project and they're finishing up the, the surface treatment. Our Creek Road is being also worked on this morning, they got about four more loads of widening to put out. And then they'll do about four loads of leveling on that road and they'll start chipping on that project as well. Um, our, uh, Cross Murray Road, we got our crossroad paved up to about, we paid about twenty-eight hundred, three thousand feet of that road, um, last week and we'll be starting, as soon as I, my crews get off of the one oh seven job, we'll be back at the work on the Murray Road on that. And then we'll be also working on the Christie Lane project for the, um, apartments that's going in there across from John Deere Place on that one. And then, um, our, some of the ARPA money of District Two, we're doing the, uh, Pine Forest Road. And they're, they're working on that road as well, so, but our, our bushhogs are bush hogging and, um, we're just, got good dry weather, so we're getting a lot done right now, so.
All of them up and running.
Yeah, we're good right now.
Did you get the burnouts fixed on the cross?
They patched those yesterday, yeah. Yeah, that's sad that, you know, we got a brand-new road that was, um, chipped, sealed, uh, last week and, and I think probably a young kid burned out on one spot, they tried to do it on another spot, but the road's pretty durable. Um, but it, they did burn out a, a pot, two potholes where they spun the tires out and one held the brake and just where they spun the tires into the base, but we got that fixed, so. But I'd love, if anybody knows anything about it, would love to know who did it. We got an idea, but, um, but not a hundred percent sure on that, so.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. All right, we're under the section, uh, reports from staff. Any other staff have reports for us today?
When is our next garbage collection date, Susan? Okay.
And it's in?
I've got some sites that I'm having a fun finding, and then I'll get it out today.
And that's, the next one's gonna be in District?
It's gonna be in.
District one?
We're gonna try to do it at Flita School, right? We're gonna try to go to Flita?
I haven't got approval yet, so I'm waiting on that.
Okay. Maybe it'll work that way.
Saturday, October nineteenth.
All right, anybody else, uh, staff, everything? We, uh?
Cat's going good?
Dylan did it.
We're gonna get to, uh, commission or this, discussion items next. What do you, what do you have? Any of you?
Seeing how the jail did not pan out with the bids that come in, a million and a half over, um, you know, we have to do some stuff with this ARPA money that we have. Karen just took the time and had went back, what, Karen, to two thousand?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, that we can transfer this money to our general fund over stuff that we have already purchased, whether it's equipment, so on. And it frees that up for us to be able to utilize that money in different areas and not be restricted by the, by the regulations with the, the government. Um, do you have the total?
I had, uh, one million, one hundred thirty-three thousand, eight forty-nine, thirty-five that, um, no, that was what was used on that. The amount that I had came up with for us to be able to move.
So let me give an update just on where we are right now while she's looking for that. We, our total received, uh, under ARPA proj- uh, funding was seven million, one ninety-six, three thirty-four, seven point two million round figures. The, uh, amount that we have already appropriated or allocated on various projects, uh, totals, uh, three point three seven two million dollars. So we have a remaining balance of three point eight two three, three point eight two four million dollars that, uh, that we're really concerned with now because it has to be allocated by December thirty-one of this year. I don't think that'll be a problem, but that's what we're working towards is identifying ways to allocate that.
I had identified over a million dollars, um, of expenditures that we had done just in last year. So over the, the period of time, I think we can come very close to the three million dollars that we have here.
So do we need to have a motion to the, to the amount that she's already came up with to approve it, to transfer over? To get it out of one of the regulations that we can use it?
The procedure that we go, have been going through on, on expending those funds is, uh, adopting a resolution specific to the various things. And we can, we can do that with a, we don't have a resolution prepared, we can go and do that if y'all choose to. Or we can just have all that ready for the next meeting, it's up to y'all.
I would go ahead and, and go ahead and do the adoption of it now to transfer those funds over.
And, and I know that there's, uh, at least some interest in, in, uh, looking at some real estate and so forth. And I think we could probably, uh, allocate an amount to that if you choose to do that at this time, or again, they can wait till the next meeting.
Let's wait till the next meeting, so you let Morgan, 'cause Morgan's gotta get back with us on a few things with that.
So what's the amount you have?
Okay, from October twenty, uh, one to September twenty-two, we had already spent four million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars in fixed assets. That could be, that money could be used to move over. So we will pass the amount, but we can come up with the total if y'all choose to go that route to free up the funds.
So you wanna make a res- uh, motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Allocating those funds, uh.
Be transferred over.
Against, against expenditures already incurred. Is there a second?
A second.
We'll get together and draft the wording of that resolution, but I think we get.
And we'll get Morgan involved on that also.
All right, so you've heard a motion and a second and again, that would take care of our obligation to, uh, to appropriate those funds or commit the funds and also on the expenditure, 'cause expenditures are in second place. So then that would, doesn't mean the funds go away, they're still sitting there for the commission to use going forward, however you see fit, so. There's a motion and second, any other questions? No questions on the amount. You heard the amount, you said, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right, good deal. That's done. Takes the pressure off on that, though.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other commission items?
Mr. Ed Hudson sent me a text this morning to want me to tell Lynn Rawls, um, how much they appreciated the striping over there at Horn Hill. That it looked like a new road.
Good deal.
Greg, I'm gonna bring one more thing up. We have to adopt our, I think our representative commission, but we do have to adopt our new business year, um, transportation plan at the next meeting, so if y'all got any questions this week, I'll give you the, this week, kinda go over those if y'all had any questions on those.
All right, we'll be looking forward to that finished proposal and plan and we'll act on it at the next meeting.
One other thing, with my discretionary money, I think I still have twenty-five hundred in there, I wanna move that over to Lynn because me and him talked about painting some roads and I can utilize that money to stripe.
What'd you say, Lynn, roughly five miles and?
Double, and it could be, it could be a lot better.
So you're looking between five and six miles of striping, I think would benefit me and him to get together.
Budget, you, you use any? We saw that.
I thought we'd used it all.
I thought we all used it all.
I did too.
I pulled it yesterday and, um, Kenneth and Greg had used their funds, but that's the only one.
So y'all wanna commit yours?
So we didn't have any, I mean, we still have.
Yes, it's been last year's, but this year's has not been spent.
Look at that smile.
We both got twenty-five hundred? Let's go shopping.
What y'all need?
Road striping.
And since our guys get their, my engineers, uh, technicians, their inspectorates are all my, um, paint crew. And so is my harvest site now, so those guys gotta be freed up from our projects, those guys should pitch right up pretty quick. So we would be painting if they were available now, but, uh, but they're, I say everybody wears two or three hats here at the county, so that's what they're doing right now. But as soon as they free up a bunch of projects, we get back from our painting.
So we have a motion from Michael to, uh, appropriate his discretionary funds, twenty-five hundred dollars to road striping. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second, questions? Anybody wanna join that?
I wanna check my schools.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. All right, that's approved. Anything else, commission?
Lynn, what, uh, what all roads did you stripe in District Four recently? I know you did Foley Road and, uh. You don't know off the top of your head, okay, that's fine.
We've, we've done a good bit. I can get you, uh, a list, I can, I can create that and get you one.
Anything else? Karen, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, if all minds are clear, we stand adjourned. Thank you.